Right, welcome to the planning board meeting of November 4th, 2025, 7 o'clock PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'll move to call the meeting to order. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, and I'm gonna, there's only three members present, so I'll do a roll call vote. I, Steph Harrison, I'm an I. Jim?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Okay.
And Rob is just joining now.
Okay. Uh, so on the agenda today, we have, uh, minutes review, we have three sets of minutes to review that were done by AI that we need to just make sure that we're good with. Um, then we have our current planning board business, which includes items for annual town meeting of 2026. All the categories that are normally on our standing agenda. We have the site plan review process. Zoning by law review update and the reviewing of the ATM annual town meeting timeline. Then in other business, we have reports on meetings with other boards and entities in the town planner report. Are there any items that, uh, were not anticipated by me 48 hours in advance that need to be added to the agenda?
None.
Okay, so with that, I would move to approve the agenda. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. I, Steph Harrison, I'm an I. Jim Guarino?
Aye.
Brett Piercy?
Aye.
And Rob Wolf?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll start with the minutes of September 16th. I'm not inclined to sort of like necessarily show them all and I mean, I guess the question is, have people had a chance to look at the minutes from September 16th, October 7th and October 21st already?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm not inclined to pull them up unless there are items that warrant discussion. So let's start with the minutes of, uh, September 16th. Were there any discussion items on that?
None here. I know that, um, there's a few corrections. I'm not sure the date, but there is. And I apologize, I'm just getting in from a site visit. Um, there was, um, one of the minutes that referenced the North Shore Water District instead of North Sherburne Water District. I think it was the last, the last set.
Yeah, it's not on the 16th.
Yeah, I don't see it on the 16th. Um.
We'll have to get to that one when, yes, when you say that.
And there was a typo with my name, I think, on the same seven minutes.
Typo in whose name?
Jim Guarino.
Okay. We'll find that one. So any comments on the six minutes from September 16th? Hearing none, um, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Do you have a second?
Second.
Uh, I'm an I. We'll take a vote. I'm an I, Jim.
Aye.
Uh, Brett?
Aye.
And Rob?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to the minutes of 10:07.
North, this is right there, North Sherburne, yes.
Ah, okay.
Yep.
So it's in a couple of places, there's that typo.
Yep.
Like, uh, four different places. Heidi? If you just search for the word shore.
Two, yeah, I'll just tell you, yeah, I found two so far with feelings.
And it's not just changing the word shore to Sherburne, it's the North Sherburne Water and Sewer District. There's like a of the in there? In all the places. It says North Shore of the Water and Sewer District?
Oh, yep.
Okay, so just check the whole, the whole name. And then Jim said there was a typo in his name somewhere, so you can locate that as well. Anything else of substance for this set of meeting minutes?
Uh, there was one thing, it looks really minor, but I, something read a little bit awkwardly on, uh, page two, the third paragraph about, uh, ever source specifications for tree removal. It says, the very last part of it says something about project includes removing undergrowth under the wires when possible and removing trees or pruning where such clearance would significantly impact their survivability. It, it kind of made more sense to me if you said pruning or removing trees rather than, you'd switch the order of those, because it seemed to say that, you know, you would prune them unless clearance impacted their survivability, in which case you'd remove them. Does that make sense?
Sure, I'm sharing the screen, I'm you're just saying like pruning or removing instead of removing or pruning?
Yeah. Because the part that follows really seems like it goes along with removing the trees and it isn't specific to pruning them. That's all.
Okay. So Heidi, did you catch that? I'm not making changes in real time, some, I can't do all those things at the same time as running a meeting, so.
Yep, so it's just gonna say pruning and I'm just switching that order.
Pruning trees or removing, yep.
All right, I'm gonna say proving trees or removing trees where such clearance, blah blah.
Okay, any, any, any other comments on this set of notes from the seventh?
I did have a comment from someone, um, that we should add, like the last names, like Debbie is Debbie DeMoro, we didn't have her last name in there.
Okay.
And I think we got everyone else's last name except Debbie.
Yeah, I think she was in the room and I, and I, so I don't think that, um, AI or myself had any knowledge of who that was.
Yeah, yeah. And it was Greg Cannon.
Okay, um, any other comments to the minutes of October 7th? Hearing none, I will move to approve the, uh, minutes of October 7th as discussed. Do you have a second?
Second.
Uh, I, Steph, I'm an I. Jim?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Rob?
Sorry.
Thank you. I'm sorry, this is a very tedious opening to the meeting. Let's go to the minutes of October 21st. The meaning, the minutes of October 21st. So any, uh, comments on the, the minutes of October 21st?
I have a question, I guess, for Heidi on this. Um, in section D under ADU updates.
Yep.
Um, there's a paragraph that says, Heidi reported a conflict between town regulations for open space developments and Board of Health septic requirements. My question is, is that, is that a clear conflict or is, are there more ambiguities?
I think there's more ambiguities. Do you have an alternative word?
Well, we could say, do you want to say Heidi reported, um, ambiguities between town regulations? For open space development?
That's fine. It's fine by me, it's what.
Or inconsistencies, maybe?
Um, I, I don't, well, inconsistency is the same thing as conflict, really. I mean, I guess the question is, you know, are we, are we sure we have a conflict? Or is it, you know, that there are some ambiguities that would need more analysis and reflection and, and you know, we're, to make a statement here that we're sure about, you know, what it is might be.
Um, I, I think, yeah, ambiguity is a good choice.
I mean, I would say that there, that in the ADU, uh, sorry, in the ADU issue, that's sort of ambiguous and we need for the septic. But what, the way that you described the open space, the goals of the open space can't be achieved within the septic regulations with this, you know, the small lots that are intended for, by open space can't actually, right? I mean, was, I guess, maybe, maybe you did say that, that, well, no, because you even, you said that, um, with the, even with shared septic, that would be an issue. Um, I guess the, uh, my understanding was really only if it had like municipal septic, you could do it. Is that correct? I mean.
That's what it looks to be, but like, we have not really been into it. So that's why I think, you know, Jane, Jane has a point to say that it's definitely not possible. It, I think that it, I think you have to look into it, because even if you do the shared septics, you'd have to have a design for an independent septic on each lot, which brings it back to that about an acre, almost an acre of land. Um, but there's a question of whether you could count some of the open space calculations for the load if it's a homeowners association, because we have, we say that you can, you know, have the town, have donate to the town or a nonprofit can run it or homeowners association. So there's a possibility if it's a homeowners association. So I don't think we've researched it enough yet.
Okay. So if we make that change, then it would probably be appropriate to take the last sentence out as well, because that also makes a definitive conclusion.
We could say smaller lots difficult.
Yeah, I mean, you know, whatever.
I think it should still, you mentioned that it's a concern. But I can say not impossible, but it's difficult might be it.
Okay.
It may end up being impossible, but I think we could say difficult at this point, since we haven't researched it yet.
Or you could say potentially making these smaller lots impossible.
Yeah, yeah. You want me to go with potentially? Planning board's choice.
Do, Heidi, you should do what, this is all attributed to you, so you should do what your intention was. So whatever makes sense along those lines.
All right, I'm gonna go with just making lots difficult as it's a little less black and white. And for now, that's kind of all I'm comfortable sitting, you know, keeping it as.
And it's possible that that was your original wording too, that kind of rings a bell.
Yeah, yeah, I've gone back, but.
Any other comments on this set of minutes?
I'll check for Jim Guarino spelling throughout.
AI does not like your name, Jim.
It was Jim Brunner the last week.
Yes. Uh, oh, speaking of, yeah, sorry, we should, any other comments?
Yeah, just, there's one, sorry, applying to me that the, um, top of the last page, Rob reported on it, it's a metropolitan Metro West Regional Transit Authority, not Metropolitan Worcester.
Thanks. He was close.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. Um, I move to approve the minutes as discussed. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I, Steph, I'm an I. Jim?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
And Rob?
Aye.
Uh, and then, so that closes up the minutes approvals, but do we have a minute AI interpreter for this meeting?
Oh, I think Brett has offered to, I'm gonna be sending her the transcript tomorrow on all this, and then she's willing to put them into minute form.
Is that happening on a, on a standing basis, Brett?
Yeah, we're gonna do, yeah, we're gonna do that. Um, and it'll, it'll get faster. This time I just, I hadn't quite like planned the time into my week very well to get them out so we could circulate them before the meeting, but we will, now that I sort of understand all, like, what's involved, um, yeah, we'll try that for a while. I mean, I'm taking notes too, just to make sure if there's things that don't make sense on the AI, but yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
It's a heavy lift.
Yes, thank you, thank you so much.
Yes.
Let us know if you get tired of it, because.
Yeah, yeah, I'll wave the flag if it gets away from me, but I was remembering, I think you said that you kept notes kind of in the star, you did the minutes at the start and helped you kind of get, and I thought it would help me kind of get into this one a bit too, so.
Okay, good. Okay. Um, all right, so we've, now that we've slogged through the minutes. Whoops. What is next? Items for annual town meeting 2026. So we have the stormwater management plan up first. And, um, I'm going to share a straw man for, oh, I swore I had it open, give me a second. A straw man for, um, different tiers of stormwater management based on the size of land disturbance. So let me share this. And if anyone, if Heidi or Joyce would like to kick this off, maybe where it came from, what the intent is, you're welcome to. I'm happy to cover it if no one wants to talk.
Sure, I can start and then Joyce can help support. Um, so Joyce and I had gone over a bunch of towns, like the neighboring towns, trying to look at what they have. And one of the first things we noticed is many have stormwater management and land disturbance process. Um, because land disturbance is something we're not really capturing right now, and especially if you're doing smaller, if someone's just taking it down a group of trees, it is gonna affect and may involve some erosion control, but may not necessarily be a full stormwater management. So the concept of having both in our bylaw, I think, would be beneficial. So that was concept number one. And then concept number two is when we looked at other towns, what seemed, what we've liked and seemed to work is the thresholds that towns are using, and some have different terms, but what we came up with was three thresholds. One would be administrative, one would be minor, and one would be major. And, um, Joyce, do you want to say anything more about the three thresholds or what you see would be beneficial for them?
So just a quick one on the administrative. So, uh, every permit that goes through the town of Sherburne requires an administrative approval application with conservation. So this is, this one would be fairly straightforward. And again, it's any building permit, any border health permit. Um, again, goes through conservation, even if there's no cut, wetlands involved, so that we can determine if it's within our jurisdiction or not. So if th- this administrative process could wrap in nicely with this, uh, this lower threshold, and I would say the majority of the applications, I, I, you know, dare say 90% um, would be in the administrative level, because they're either decks or very small additions or things like that, that might not go beyond this. So I was, I, I don't think it's necessary, I, I brought up the, um, the, uh, my, our approval, administrative approval application that we could modify slightly to, to do this. To just wrap it all together. And, and the other two were, are, will, will evolve as we revise the regulations.
Right, so the administrative one, there's no fee for when you're doing this, right?
So, uh, we have a $70 fee for our administrative approval.
Okay.
And, you know, and it requires a site walk. Uh, you know, I go out and I walk the site, um, I look at whatever they're proposing and whatever plans they have prepared, a- and then I make that determination.
Okay. So we, we kind of do not want to have people go through two processes. Um, so that's what we're trying to see, if we can streamline the lowest level to be something that maybe in our bylaws, we delegate this to CONCOM, where they flag and see if there's anything that needs to be moved up to minor or just stays at administrative, um, because I don't know if planning board would really want to get involved analyzing anything more than CONCOM already has done.
So in constant, in our administrative approvals, it's simply, it's my review. It, we posted on our agenda just to show it, but we, they don't, it's not ratified, it's not voted on, it's, um, it's legitimately a, an administrative approval.
I have two, I have two questions. One, you said there's a $70 fee, but that's already the fee that CONCOM is charging, so there's no additional fee for a stormwater management assessment, correct?
No, I mean.
And then two, is there a threshold, is this thousand square foot threshold because there's a similar threshold, or is, is that debatable?
I think that's debatable. I think that's something we're still working, it was the three levels, I think, that Heidi wanted to discuss tonight.
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't some trigger in CONCOM's review that would, it would need to be consistent with, okay?
No, if it, if it fell within the buffer zone, it would be entirely within our review and we'd require in most instances, simple ones, we don't require erosion control, but, I mean, if it had no ground disturbance, if, or a deck above ground, we wouldn't require erosion control in the buffer zone, but otherwise, um, we would, and, and it would be, it would wrap it right into conservation. Um, approval.
Yeah, so the, what we're putting on for the description and the, the threshold levels is something we're hoping will be at another meeting. We'd like to today just get to the concepts that we have, three thresholds, and then we'll do more research on other towns to say what they use for their requirements. Um, because I did speak with Eric Johnson, and he pointed out that he feels Sherburne has large lots and that, like, this level might be fine for Natick, but maybe this needs to be a higher level. Maybe it's 5,000 square feet in Sherburne, you know, for administrative level. So that's still to be discussed. We're just trying to say, would the planning board agree to administrative, minor and major? And then the next differences are the minor. Um, one of the big differences is gonna be whether there are hearings, public hearings. So the minor would involve just a planning board hearing, like our A and R process. No formal rebutter notification required. This is really, it's like, like I said, all about erosion control and street protection. It's similar to the one that we just did, uh, last recently that was pretty minimal. We're essentially agreeing with what CONCOM's conditions were and, um, does not have much of a dis- land disturbance. The next one, if you are, oh, sorry, go ahead, Joyce.
I didn't say that.
No, that was, that was me. I, I, I guess I was just, I do have a lot of comments on the content. Do you want to get into that today, because you're going through it, or do you want to wait in for a future meeting?
We can wait for a future meeting. I was just trying to explain minor to us was not, or what we were looking at would not have a full public hearing in the sense of how we think with notify, notifying to a butters. Major would be the one, um, where we, we're thinking two different criterias, if it's over an acre of land, which is kind of what we have right now for our stormwater, or if it's over 10,000 square feet of additional impervious surface, which would actually also have a significant impact. That would be a, a public hearing with notice to a butters. We can decide if it's regular mail or certified. Uh, CONCOM's notice for their hearings is usually only one newspaper. Um, as opposed to our special permits and zoning bylaws, which are two. I don't necessarily think with stormwater, again, on this level, if we need to do two newspapers publicizing, um, a lot of towns, it is only regular mail. Some don't even have notice to a butters. So, but we kind of feel with a major product, it would be nice to have a letter to the butters notifying that this event is happening. So we can definitely go into that more. We're just trying to give you some ideas of what to look at and think about, and, um, for the next hearing, really try, or next meeting, rather, try to go more into details, but happy to hear comments now on what you'd like to see.
Do, do you want to? I mean, we can get into it, we can, okay. So, um, I like the idea of the three thresholds. I think 1,000 square feet is too small for Sherburne to be the first threshold. Um, I think one acre is the right threshold, and I like the idea of 10,000 square feet also. It's the second threshold I'm good with. Um, when I read minor, it's about erosion control and street protection, and the types of activities it talks about are erosion control, project access, street sweeping, which to me sound like construction phase activities, like when the construction is ongoing and there are dirt roads on the property and vehicles coming on and off the property. Um, and I guess one of my main questions when looking at this was, is this intended to be about construction phase activities, stormwater versus more permanent stormwater management above and beyond maybe what the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook requires? Um, maybe it's a combination of both, maybe there was an intent to do one or the other, but, um.
Under minor, it was simply, the, the intent was for it to be about erosion control. At the major level, it would be meeting DEP stormwater standards.
So erosion control only during construction phase?
Well, what other, what, when else would you put it in? What would be, what would be the reason to have it at some other time?
Um.
So if we're talking erosion control, we're talking silt fence, we're talking, um, uh, stone entrance.
But if you're looking at slopes and grading.
But that's not so, so the minor one, if it's within a certain threshold, I mean, that's, this is for you to decide. That what we had looked at was a minor would simply be about ensuring that there's erosion control, uh, like we'd showed on lots one and two, um, for a Washington street at the last hearing for, um, uh, Barb Murchison. You know, those would be this, kind of the standard things that we would look for in a minor. Again, and, and this is up to the, the, the board, but the major one would be the, when the threshold kicks in, where you analyze pre and post, um, construction and, you know, institute stormwater, either roof infiltration or settling basins or, or something. And it could be as simple as something. But it would involve a stormwater report that would need to be reviewed, um, in addition to erosion control.
Okay, that's helpful, just to have context. I'm, I'm gonna give it some thought.
Does anyone not want to do these type of three threshold levels? Should we continue working with this as a framework, I guess, is what I'm looking at?
I think so. I mean, today's, today is just a discussion, right? So we're not taking a vote, but if anyone has reservations about these three tiers, it would be good to know that now.
I don't think I have any reservations, but I don't know. I mean, it seems to be a major step in adjusting the thresholds. I mean, 1,000 may be too little for administrative. Um, I think 5,000 might be too much, maybe somewhere in between that, and then adjusting the other levels proportionally.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful to think about the types of projects that might come up under land disturbance and what size they might be, right? Because, um, and I think it depends too, because right now, all our area, like, excludes driveways and accessways or something like that. And so if it's excluding driveways and accessways, we want it to be a much tighter threshold, but if we're removing that exclusion, then we can, it's just a different conversation, right?
I'm, yeah, and I've, in, in my humble opinion, we should remove, um, the, the exclusion of driveways, because it's, that's the whole intent of this.
Yes, exactly, okay. Uh, yeah, okay. Okay.
Is that threshold basically say that any what, anything that disturbs any amount of land has to come before the cons come?
It, not necessarily. So if, if, if a project disturbs, well, forgetting the thresholds for now, but let's just say that number were 10,000 square feet. It would be any project, any project, not necessarily one needing a building permit, but any project that disturbed 10,000 square feet or, um, less would be, you know, would be administrative, 10,000 square feet or more would be minor. And, you know, it, it was, we're gonna, it's gonna be a cap, uh, like there, some of these things that come in for permits are on napkins, basically, these plans. And they're very simple, and so they would be easily administrative and will clearly won't disturb even 1,000 square feet. And as they get more complicated, some of them now don't show grading, but we're gonna have to, you know, train people, train the, the people who are preparing the plans to show limit of work. And it just takes a little bit of time to get people to focus on what's gonna be your limit of work.
So does land disturbance include, like, laying a lawn, like, making a, making an agricultural field, making a large garden, like, all of those things would be land disturbance?
Well, I don't know that, there were certain exemptions for agricultural, and that's, you know, that would have to be. Well, I don't know that. There were certain exemptions for agricultural and that's, you know, that would have to be explored in another way. Um, but it's it it's ground disturbance, um, just like the um. The Niptys permit is, it's 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 ground disturbance, not building area or driveway area. It's it's what's been disturbed and not just even cutting down trees, it's. Uh, you know, exposing uh soil. You know, ha- having it be unstable until until such time as it's stabilized. So it's very easy to. Reduce your limit of work. You know, during construction, you if there unless someone's trying to do a giant lawn. And so what we found in other towns is that people, whoever's preparing these plans or or designing them. Has, you know, has learned to keep their. Limit of work lower so that they don't trigger certain. Uh, they don't certain thresholds, so they don't have to go through a stormwater design. And I think as I say, say, when we first started talking about this. You know, we've had a lot of new construction houses, big new construction houses come in through conservation. And I, you know, measured the area of disturbance and it did not meet. Uh, they they were all under an acre. Uh, it bobs on lots one and two, the only reason that. Came before you, um, i- individually, they wouldn't have triggered the acre, but because they had a common. Um. They had the common driveway that tied the two together. That's where it's triggered the acre.
So so minor, if that were set at ten thousand square feet, that's about a quarter acre or so. And that's probably appropriate.
If you're putting on a big addition, that's a lot of ground disturbance that you'd have to do in order to hit that threshold.
Yeah.
Heidi, what were you, you, did you have thoughts beyond that?
No, I think we need to like look through different threshold levels and see what what um. Seems reasonable for Sherburne and what other towns are doing that are comparable. Um, Steph, you mentioned you couldn't, if it's construction phase only, but. If you look at some of, like, if someone's putting in a huge lawn or decides to clear and they're on a slope and all of a sudden now all this rainwater is going towards their neighbors.
Exactly that scenario I was thinking of.
That it's not miners, not just construction. I think it's something that you look at.
Yeah.
The overall impact in general.
Um, I would, I would s- suggest that if you're, Jim, if you're saying that. The threshold between administrative and minor would be ten thousand. To me, that's a little high. Because a quarter acre is a lot of disturbance. Um. Uh.
I think we saw three thousand square feet in one town, and one of them might have been have been up to five thousand square feet. We'll we'll go and look around and get some ideas, but.
We can also look at the the projects that have come in through over the years and just do an estimate on. You know, what? How many projects might have contributed? Um. What might might have been minor or administrative, because we know there have been very few major. If any, well, I I know of one that that Wildwood that would have triggered it.
Yeah.
What I was saying was set minor at ten thousand square feet or a quarter acre.
Instead of between the threshold between minor and major, you're saying?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I I miss I misunderstood you. I thought you were saying between administrative and minor.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
Um. A quarter of acre on that side of the scale is really small. Because the state requirement is one acre, right? And then when you think about Sherburne having like larger lots.
Well, that's.
Not that we would go above an acre, but.
Yeah, the federal trigger is an acre, not not the state. And the state is the D E P stormwater guidelines are, it's it's it doesn't even apply to a single family dwelling. They only apply to uh four or more dwellings, so or uh certain commercial projects or. Um. High use, uh, high, high use activities. So while many uh many towns refer to that as guidelines to the design for design purposes. The stormwater guidelines themselves don't apply to single family dwellings.
But on the other hand, I like one acre is a lot, right? So a quarter acre is like really pretty small. And one acre is huge when you're talking about a town like Sherburne and especially the potential to convert. Permeable surfaces to impermeable surfaces, right? Like some of that ground disturbance is going to result in in significantly more runoff, right? So that's the whole thing here. So. We we can have these discussions about the thresholds, but it's good for us all to start thinking about it now. Um.
It it might, uh, Heidi, it might al- might also be helpful to get input from. I mean, this is all uh under your. Oversight, but it might be helpful too to just see what other boards might think, just, you know, just to get an input, just to see what they think, even though they have no vote.
Yeah, I think after we go through our next and decide some threshold amounts, maybe then take it to different boards. And see if they're on board with you to see what their comments are.
Say it should be more or less, you know, maybe they'll just have some insight that we're not, you know, it would be helpful.
And I think just like we do with all other things on the planning board, looking at towns like Carlisle and. You know. Harvard and. So what where where their thresholds are is always a good benchmark just for us to to consider.
Yeah. No, I mean, I can um circulate the concept of thresholds to other boards and just say what levels they think and get feedback for us.
Okay. But it sounds like there's no reservations about the idea of these three thresholds. These three, you know, categories. And then and then it's just a matter of like setting what the threshold values should be and what the actions should be for each of them.
Yep.
Is the board generally in agreement with that?
Yeah, I was just, again, trying to offer something which seemed reasonable as opposed to one thousand for minor, which seems low. Using a quarter acre as.
Yeah, we can have, um, we could, I think, if we get sort of the the research in the context of what other towns do, that'll be helpful.
Yeah.
And then Joyce said she can provide like a record of what. Kind of what's happened in the last, so that we kind of understand what would go into the buckets, is that?
Yes.
Super.
And you know, this, it it's not gonna be this daunting going forward. This is. Picking the thresholds is probably the hardest part of the whole. Of the whole process. Everything else is is pretty much making sure things are spelled right and that includes things. So. Like a butter notification.
Yeah.
Can I just make one clarification, Heidi, at the start, when you introduced the three categories? Um, was that, and then Joyce said something that made me think, is that from federal regulations or state regulations, or how did you kind of discover the three categories?
Looking at other towns bylaws.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wasn't sure I had that.
Yeah, no, just some have different terms, some are different, but this one seemed to be pretty cl- like, easy to understand. All right, Steph, that's it on stormwater then.
Okay.
Good night, Al.
Um, so that would be a potential bylaw for the spring town meeting.
Yeah.
Um. We also have some housekeeping items that we've talked about in the past. I don't want to dredge them all up today, Heidi, um, but I think we can.
No.
Sort of. Put together some. Bylaw language around them and show the show the markups of a housekeeping. And uh.
Yes. Yeah, there's actually only a few, a few left. When we went through that whole list, there's a couple definitions, there's some. Adjustments of the tables versus that. Um, and then getting rid of the number twenty seven, the low and moderate income A D U, probably deleting that, it just doesn't work. Um.
Yeah, so let's talk about that once we have sort of like draft language in front of us to. To discuss, but that's gotta be fairly soon, right? Because we're already in November. I guess timelines later in this agenda, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, the sign by law. Did you have?
Yep, um, I Brett and I had some conversation or communications on that a little bit. Um. My. My recommendation with the sign by law is to put it off at with the zoning by law review overhaul. I I think we really need some guidance here on. What other towns have done more and actually what's held up more. You know, we we've had. Our town council say you can't do anything, but we see it in other towns. Um, I kind of would like to get a little more input. From the consultant and the zoning attorney that we do hire for the project. Because we we have a couple issues. So the political signs, there are the lit signs, and then there are also the stand up. Sandwich board signs. So there's some different concepts in there to only go after part of it right now versus when we've come back again. I I just don't know if. It it's. The right time. It'd be really pushing to get it done, and we know it's a controversial topic. So it's up up to the planning board if you want to discuss it more and decide what you want to do.
I think there were certain folks who had a more more of a. I think, was it with Brett? Did you sort of raise your hand to sort of think about the signs and what do you think about Heidi's approach for?
Yeah, so when she and I talked about it, it makes sense to me, particularly if if this is gonna be contentious or something that. I don't want to say that people will litigate, but if if it's gonna be a really touchy thing, it would be good to get the input as part of the larger zoning process. I mean, I guess if there. If there are sort of immediate critical issues, we could make a stand, but I think it's kind of better to do this. It sounds like we need more perspective. On it. I'm, to be honest, uh, I'm happy with our downtown, so it's sort of hard for me to see what people's like issues are. So I feel like if we knew more of like, okay, if you have this regulation, this is the kind of downtown you end up with, like, maybe it starts to look like Las Vegas or whatever, Route Nine or something. Um, you know, I, for me, I don't, I don't, I haven't been a lot on the design side. I'm always kind of on the economic side, so I don't really have a good idea of like what it ends up looking like. I only kind of know what it is like. If you're trying to say offer operate a business there or something like that, so. Anyway, so that was my feeling is that I I think it's worth waiting, but I mean, if if people are absolutely telling you, like, every time you're in the shopping market, somebody is like stopping you and be like, we gotta do something about these signs, then. Okay, we can do it now, so.
I also agree with the more measured approach to just wait and get different a a broader perspective.
I think one thing we haven't really brought up, which Brett mentioned the economic side, we haven't really talked to the businesses. What's their feelings for having a lit versus an unlit sign? And. That might be good if some people here on the planning board want to do a little outreach or talk to some of the businesses and get their feedbacks. What about those sandwich things, signs that they put out? How important is it? You know, what, how valuable do they think that is to their business? That would just be good input for us to know.
And also from our perspective, you know, what what would we really be willing to enforce and or defend? You know, if it came to that, because, you know, to have something that we wouldn't really be willing to spend the time and effort and money on enforcing or defending is. Kind of a waste.
Yes.
That's a great point. Okay, so we can uh. Sort of maybe. I wonder if we take it off the list of items for annual town meeting twenty six moving forward?
Yeah.
Just so. We can. And and put it up, make sure it's on the consultant list. I think it is.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah. We do have a business association, right, in Sherburne, the Town Business Association? That might be an easy place to sort of start. To ask.
Does anyone want to take this on as a project to talk to businesses downtown or?
I'll do it. I'd love to do that.
Okay.
I mean, if somebody else wants to do it with me, that's fine too, but I'll do that.
Steph, you have a comment from Nora?
Uh, yep, Nora.
I I don't know if this is appropriate or we, feel free to ask me. I have a business in town and um. The Business Association would be a great place to start. Um, and yeah, I think sandwich boards are great, but they have to, in my opinion, they should be brought in every day. They shouldn't be out overnight. I think other towns re- uh, require that from when I. Um, you know, worked at other uh offices and we had sandwich boards, they had to come back in, you know, um, every night. So.
I think our our regulations requi- I think we require that now.
Yeah, one of the things, if I could just, I've I've talked to Chris Canny about this, one thing that um, we're trying to get. You know, the all those, you know, did you know that they're looking for bus drivers? And you know, all the things around town, all those junky signs all around. That's been to me a real eyesore in general, but I I wish that people could enforce. I think the big thing is enforcing. But anyway, I wasn't here to talk about signs, so I'm just here to listen, sorry, but I just. Since I own that building in town. And have signs up, it it is interesting. Thanks.
Um, so the next item is A D U updates.
So we're still waiting for the Attorney General to approve our A D U and our M B T A. Bylaws from this last town meeting, so until we get their. Feedback approval or nonapproval on sections, we we don't really know where we stand. So that's gonna stay on the list, unfortunately.
And what's the deadline?
The latest deadline was November tenth. But.
Keep us posted.
Yeah.
And I don't think we have other items for consideration at this time for the next town meeting. It's looking like stormwater management and housekeeping. Um. Just sort of wanted to. Float that and see if anyone else had any hot topics to make sure we talk about in the very short term. Otherwise, we can wait for the more comprehensive review coming up. Okay, um. The next item on the agenda is to discuss the site plan review process.
Another heavy topic. So. Chris Canny has some ideas. Um, I had spoken with him this week because. One of the concerns we have is we have areas where. Like when Millborn Farm came in, there was no site plan review process for them. The only thing we could talk about was their off-street parking. And just because something is a Dover protected use doesn't mean. You can't have a site plan review process. You can actually even have special permits on some of them, but the whole goal is they're allowed to have a use, but. The town can have input on trees, access, um, different things, so. We'd like to see. Site plan review added for almost any type of use or, you know, change of use, even if it is a protected use, but. Some type of review process for them. Um, we also have some conflicts of. Residential and non-residential areas of what is allowed or not allowed, that has to be. Better worded. So what Chris is thinking that most of this is actually gonna wait for the overall bylaw review. So I did put in and send out information on site plan. I think it's something we should start looking at and trying to get familiar with, but. It's gonna take a lot of. Weeding through our bylaws because we have it scattered throughout. And um, trying to come up with a cohesive. Program.
Okay. Thanks. Um, the next item is titled as zoning bylaw review update. Is that just an update on the? Process?
Yeah. Yeah, so. We are waiting on the state grant funding that they are supposed to come out hopefully the end of this week with their. Rough draft to us on what the contract's gonna look like with them. Um. We are set to go with a consultant. Um, I actually just have been speaking with a zoning attorney and spoke with them again today. Their pricing seems very reasonable. They seem very knowledgeable. The this attorney I spoke with has worked with. Some towns in Western Mass just doing like their solar and battery energy storage systems. You know, so they they have a general counsel, but then they now have a special zoning attorney and this, they seem to specialize in this, which I think would be really valuable for us. And he's gonna put together a proposal for me on what type of scope of of work it would do. Um, we, I told him we wanted to look specifically also to get some input on stormwater, site plan, signs. And batteries, energy, storage and solar. Um. So not only would it be looking at what we have, but also to come up with some strategies, and I think that was, it's kind of something we've been missing in this town. And uh. So hopefully trying to pull the whole packet together and and in another couple of weeks be ready to go with that.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
So the next item says, review the annual town meeting timeline. Should I open that timeline document?
Yes, please.
Share it, okay. Give me just a moment here. You can go ahead and start, Heidi.
Okay, so. I think what what I was putting down is where we stand. November is our last working month where we start needing warrant language to be. Done in in December. We are now can take the sign by law off of that area. Um, I think when you have the screen up, it'll be easier. All right, so. Stormwater by rigs in November. We've identified the thresholds. The next meeting in November, we're hoping to have more information on the processes and come with that so that by December, we're starting our warrant language and by end of December, we have our warrant language going and have scheduled hearings. Signs are coming off. Housekeeping will be moving along with this as well. And the AG recommendation, I had put it in December since we haven't heard anything yet. Hopefully there is nothing else from what was left over from ADU and MBTA. Uh, so we are on track, but we have to get moving on the language soon. That's the, that's the gist of this, this screen.
Do we know when town meeting is or not yet?
Uh, I think it's probably, no, it's usually that third, third weekend, third, third Thursday, Tuesday.
In April?
So actually it might be eight, the 28th actually, cause I think it's going to be vacation week on that 20th.
I was just gonna say that's vacation.
So, so it's probably the 28th. So a little bit later. Which is good. It gives us like one more week.
Okay. Um. Thank you for that update. All right, so moving on, uh, in the agenda, we now have reports on meetings with other boards and entities. If anyone has anything to report on that front? Rob says no. Um. Yeah, I'm not coming up with anything. North Sherburne Water and Sewer District?
They're meeting this week.
The DEIR closes soon, the comments?
November 7th, I think. Yeah, we did, I did submit our letter.
And then it should be a week until a determination is made, right? Or something like that. It's a really quick turnaround.
Yes, I think 10, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Town planner report next?
Yep.
Okay, so we have, um, what was on our complete streets list, the crossing lights at Sider Hill. Rob's got to be thrilled that they're started that process. It's not in yet, but they're close. Um, and at Goulding East also, in Goulding West, you can see they put in the ramps. They have the cement pots in where the lights are going to be. Both of them are going to have a pre-flashing light on one side. So that hopefully make it a little bit safer. Still not a great spot when it's 40 miles an hour, but it's a step in the right direction.
With that bend there, that's.
It's, yeah, but at least now with even putting a pre-one, they'll be with a flashing light. It's better than someone just standing there trying to get across it. You don't see it all. You know, um, then, uh, Open Space is working on that Open Space and Recreation Plan. We have a survey that we'll be getting out at the end of this month. And so we will have a, a mailer going to every household as well as trying to get publicity out to different groups. And we're going to ask that everyone try and take the survey. It'd be really helpful because it's going to be 10 years for the next update. So this is key to get input. Uh, MVP 2.0, we're working on that plan and that, um, that works on more of vulnerable populations in Sherburne and how we're addressing those who have needs and identifying what groups might be vulnerable. So that is involving a little more outreach to different groups, such as I've talked to the church, I've talked to Pine Hill Elementary School. Uh, but that is another plan that we're working on. The town forest committee is working on a stewardship program for the trails with the Sherburne Forest and Trails. And then they also are working on, um, it's a plan of how you would apply and have a process if you want to have something put in a new trail or anything into the town forest. There's been nothing formal. So I think that is a good step for them to try and get some things down. Um, hazard mitigation plan is being worked on as well. There's a consultant that's working with that and that's being led by Zach Ward, the fire chief, which actually overlaps several of these different, because it talks about town forest, it talks about some of the MVP concepts. So it is kind of interesting that these, what we're working on right now kind of all meshed together. Uh, the swap meeting, the Southwest Area Planning, Planning Group is talking about doing a regional housing plan. I don't know how that'll look, but it'll be a regional housing production plan and they got to have grant money to go and do. I don't know how much Sherburne will be contributing into that, but we are part of that group. And, uh, Chris Canny has been working on the maps, updating our maps, moving us off from 2011. I think we'll be moving up to 2024 soon. So he's just about has all the parcels set and we're hoping in the next month or two to have new maps done for the assessors and also getting new data that online, you'll be able to see more accurate parcels. That's my report.
A lot going on.
Yeah.
Okay, well, um, I mean, we came to the end of our agenda here pretty quickly, so there's nothing major on this particular uh, particular agenda. What's the, the next meeting would be?
The 18th.
18th.
Yeah. And I probably can't make that one. So we'll leave it up for you and Frank to run.
What's on, what's on the agenda for that? Maybe we can just touch base.
Yeah, what I want to get is, um, research on the stormwater management. So that's something that, you know, I'll work on with Joyce and I can send it to you and talk with you about what the thresholds are. A discussion. The real, uh.
What about, what about the housekeeping language? When do you think you'll have draft lang- the housekeeping items?
Probably not till the first December weekend, the first December meeting.
Okay.
Cause I still don't know what's going to be in that, depending what the AG's report. If the AG comes back, then, then we can move forward with some things.
So this, the next meeting would be stormwater management and then anything that comes up in the meantime, but nothing?
Yep.
Okay.
No. There might be a hearing coming up for another stormwater plan. I was, there was an inquiry for a stormwater plan. And this is a little bit bigger process, um, on this, uh, it's for 81 Prospect Street. And there's a, it, it's one of the things that I'm going to ask that they do a certified, not a certified letter, but a letter to a certified butters. Just a notice that we're going to have, um, a meeting on it because it is a much bigger project. But we haven't gotten the application.
On November 18th?
It might be, yeah.
And would November 18th be Zoom or in person?
Probably, probably Zoom.
Okay.
I think it's easier to share the documents.
All right, well, uh, anyone else have anything before we adjourn? Great. Well, I moved to adjourn. Do you have a second?
Second.
Uh, and I, I'm an I. Rob?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Brett?
Hi.
Adjourned, thank you.
At 7:59. Great, thank you.
Thank you.